Your patients. So, Mr. Rasmussen. For, does he need to make sure he's unmuted and?
It looks like he is unmuted.
Looks like you're good to go.
Alright, so, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board and support staff. I am Joseph Rasmussen, a licensed educator, a coach, and a resident of Milton. To recap, at the last board meeting, I asked you to consider relooking your policy on public comment, especially when it comes to citizens like me. Though it is unlawful for you to demand this information, especially under HIPAA, I would like to know how individuals like me, those with medical conditions, may participate in meetings of this school board. I cannot breathe in masks, and prescribe medication, and prescribe dietary restrictions, and the effects of mask wearing on me, especially for long periods of time, are physically debilitating. Before, during, and after the last board meeting, I asked how I may participate. I was told by a board member to talk with the president. I was told by the president to talk to Mr. Domin. Initially, he told me I could not participate, that I could only watch on YouTube, which, I'm not for sure if it's on right now. Then, when I spoke in my medical condition, I was, in essence, given a wink-wink. I was told to simply lower my mask, uncap my water bottle, and with the bottle uncapped, catch my breath. I kind of appreciated that. Until I told a story to a child who said, "That is just bending the rules." And I said, "Yep, you're correct." I was told by a distant person to bend the rules. There was a time during your COVID response when this board was, and graciously so, accepting the policy regarding public comment. Your exception allowed emails and letters to be read during the district's bounce back time. I appreciated that small gesture, and I think it would be nice to have that exception once again. If you are going to restrict attendance at our meetings by not granting medical and/or religious exemption, then it is incumbent upon you as a board to figure out how to be inclusive. In fact, the standard in education for those with special considerations is the restrictive environment. Watching on YouTube is actually the most restrictive environment, because it's a one-way feed. You sit behind your gavel, you do not read letters, and you want to bar me from this public place of gathering. And as you do so, you silence my speech.
Thirty seconds.
And you look like redcoats. And speaking not only for me, the metaphorical T is about to be jumped in the harbor. Others are afraid to be here and speak, because of the bullying tactics of both some in this community and because of this administration. So I am here, though I would rather be home watching Monday Night Football, and I'm here to speak for them.
Your time is up, Mr. Rasmussen.
And my note says, "Smile, breathe, and say thank you."
Thank you. Tracy Hannah is next on the list.
Good evening, my name is Tracy Hannah, as you all know, and I have a son who's in 7th grade. I would like this board to review in action what is in their power to remove the mandate that requires the Wisconsin DPI Behavioral Risk Survey to be given at the middle school level as part of our Second Step curriculum. As I feel the questions are inappropriate to ask our young children. As we try to keep our children innocent, more and more is being presented to them that goes against this effort. I was grateful that I read the email and was permitted to opt my child out of the survey. As though some of the questions were mundane, some, in my opinion, have no basis to be asked in school. As parents, we were advised that this was an anonymous survey, which I find hard to believe when the survey is taken on a school-issued iPad. A truly anonymous survey would have been given via pen and paper. As we all know, anything digital can be traced. Who in this room, young and old, the public, or the board, would feel comfortable answering the below in front of the entire administration? During the past 30 days, on how many days did you receive, send, or share nude photos or other sexual images? Have you ever had sexual intercourse? During the past 12 months, did you ever seriously think about killing yourself? During the past 12 months, did you ever make a plan about how you would kill yourself? These are 12- and 13-year-old children, and my opinion should not be faced with questions like this in a school setting. The DPI website even highlights that the survey covers sensitive topics. It would concern me that a child with instability, who may not have thought about harming themselves, may now consider it as been put into their mind. What value does this add to our students, especially, as stated, it is anonymous? I personally, as a parent, went through the questions with my child to show why I was opting him out. I hope all parents were educated on this survey as well before allowing their children to take it. I still wonder what the reason is that the survey was given. Is it for metrics? Is it given to help a student who may be at risk? But it's anonymous, we can't have that both ways. I don't think a sensitive survey should be given for metrics only. If the school has a concern about a child, I think it would be best course of action to talk to them or look at them. You can tell a lot more from a child's face, their eyes, their behavior, or their smile than you will ever see on a survey, especially one that makes them uncomfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Dan DeFor.
Hello, I'm Dan DeFor, I'm a resident of Janesville, and I live within the Milton School District. I'm very interested in tonight's scheduled presentation on the Second Step curriculum, which, according to their website, is a holistic approach to building supportive communities for every child through social, emotional learning. Knowing of this presentation, I went to the secondstep.org website. Is this the same Second Step which will be discussed tonight, is the question? I hope not, because I read very concerning content. The content included topics which have been widely identified as highly controversial by many parents and citizens across the United States. Here's what I, here's the little of what I've discovered by spending less than 30 minutes on this website. First, the Second Step curriculum is supported and guided by some of the most left-leaning nonprofit organizations in the country today, many of whom have a distinct presence in the Second Step website itself and provide reference material for adults and teachers. What I first learned was, our current systems perpetuate inequity by design. It goes on to say that these inequity systems were not created by accident, and they will not be undone by chance. They clearly state they want to transform the education system. Why does it need to be transformed? Perhaps we'll hear that tonight. Due to the time constraints here, here are just a few brief examples of the controversial topics I mentioned earlier. For example, the group Learning for Justice, one of these nonprofits, provides training materials on the following: facilitating critical conversations with students where you will learn how to communicate about such topics as white privilege, police violence, economic inequality, and mass incarceration. Here are a couple other lessons they offer. Let's talk discussing whiteness. Or, how about this? What about critical race theory, what about critical race theory is, and what does it mean to teachers? Also on the website, I listened to a YouTube video entitled "Cassel Cares." Cassel is one of these nonprofits. It's entitled SEL as a lever to equi, for equity and social justice. It was presented by the president and CEO of Cassel. In this video, ongoing systemic race rape, in, in the highlighted video, ongoing systemic racism and violence against the black community, we discuss equity and racial justice through the lens of SEL. That's social emotional learning. In conclusion, I will listen very closely to the Second Step presentation to see if these controversial beliefs and lessons will be taught to our children and why. In the event these topics are not discussed tonight, I would like to ask the three school board members on the curriculum committee, why not? Perhaps there's a good explanation I just can't think of. Lastly, to the parents and citizens of the Milton School District, I highly recommend you do your own research on this controversial curriculum by going out to the secondstep.org website and find out for yourselves what they're really planning to teach your children. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number two, we have some 9th grade students from the high school here to talk to us about the Avid program, so we, we welcome you. Thank you for giving up your time to be here to give us some information about this program. We appreciate that.
Sure.
Thanks.
So I talked to several of you probably about a month or two ago. And we talked about doing some program highlights. A couple years ago, we came with you, or came to you with this new program called Avid. And we were really excited to bring Avid to our school district. And we've had some new bases now on the board, so we thought, you know what, this would be a good time to bring it. Not day two to the board, but instead of listening to me, we thought we would bring some more students here to tell you all about Avid, what it looks like in the classroom, and all the great things they're doing. So first off, we introduced Ms. Shawn Wasner, who is our Avid elective teacher at the high school.
Alright. Good night, everybody. I'm so excited to be here, and glad that we got invited to come and chat. I wasn't sure I was going to get to come this early in the school year, but I was like, yay! I'm sure all the new things that are going on. So, this is my first year as an Avid elective teacher. Usually I have been teaching English and Spanish at the high school, but I have been trained in Avid for the past couple of years, and so this is my first year really getting a whole elective class for myself. We have 23 students who are in the program right now, and three of them are going to be here with us tonight telling you a little bit about what are some of the strategies we use in the classroom, things like that to really maximize learning.
So, go ahead.
Writing. Writing is used for organization of thoughts, reflecting, learning, and communication. Staying attentive and taking notes during the lesson allows students to review any needed information at a later date. For me, I take a lot of notes in my biology and biomedical courses. Citing and supporting many points allows students to deepen understanding while communicating clearly and confidently. In Avid, in this Avid course, this year, we did a time-formative expository essay. And I know this will benefit me in my later, later English courses this year.
Inquiry is asking big questions or asking questions about things that confuse you. Inquiry is often used in core classes such as English Language Arts, Algebra, Science, and Social Studies. These classes often require us to use Costa's level of thinking. There are three different levels: gathering, processing, and applying. Application is the highest level of questioning that can only be found off the page. It relies on your individual experiences, connections, and thought processes.
Collaboration is the sharing of ideas, information, and opinions we all keep, and we all keep positive group interactions. Everyone works together putting in the same amount of effort, because teamwork is a shared responsibility. You listen to others attentively and work to achieve a common goal. For example, in my biomedical class, everyone has to work together to test and get results. In Avid 9, we also pitched and completed a community service project, Trash and Collection in Milton.
Okay, the O of WICER is organization. What is organization? It's more than just saying organize in your class and having everything where it belongs. Not only do you have to manage your materials, but you also plan and prioritize. Goal-setting is a big part. We recently did some things with goal settings. Strategy and taking responsibility is another thing that ties into organization, and you develop and use a, use a process. For Avid, our process is our binder and our notes. We have special ones that we try out every once in a while. Like recently in class, we tried out the sketch noting, which is easier for people who are more visual, where you draw pictures instead of actually like write notes. We also, another Avid requirement and thing that I think everyone really needs is a planner. It's, paper planner is usually best. It can be, you, it can be personal and school-related, to tie into both. And you have to have organized goals and SMART goals, or short, mid, and long-term goals. We, we, we recently, our timed essay, like Riley mentioned, was our short-term, our long-term, and our midterm goals. And we basically just picked a few and we summarized them. Organization is also a lot of self-reflection, planning on what you can do better, and just whatever you can do better on and stuff. We have summatives of that, just to reflect and see how well you think you are doing. Reading is the R of WICER, and what is Avid's take on reading? Avid really wants you, when you're reading, to be interactive with the text. Really like think about it, mark it up, highlight it, circle things. It also builds on vocabulary, summarizing, and rhetorical thinking. Note-taking, graphic organizers, we also do that while reading. And another big thing is after you take notes or read a paragraph or an article of anything, you summarize it. Basically group all that information together. At MHS this year, we've been reading of Mice and Men in English. And in my English class, we've done some reading in the Avid 9 course to prepare for Socratic seminars. Socratic seminars is not your normal, like, speech circle. It's usually two circles, but on Friday, I believe, we did, or it was three. You have the main group of kids who are talking, and the people behind them are passing them notes. So if you want to add something, you pass them a sticky note, they can speech it and whatever. And then the last circle is, like, basically grading the speaker. So you mark up how many times they've referenced the text and stuff like that.
Alright, so as far as the value of Avid, I have a few questions for you, friends. You ready?
Yeah.
Alright. Can you tell me a little bit how, how you feel like Avid has made the transition to high school better or easier for you?
It's kind of like a good way to wake up in the morning, I guess. Instead of just like going straight to like one of your core classes, you're just going to Avid and you're just, you're getting your thought process ready for the day, and then you're going into the school. So it's more of like an easier transition from going straight to classes.
Yeah. They're with me starting at 7:35 in the morning, so it's awful early for teenagers. Anything else transitioning to the high school?
Um, I feel like people that are new to Avid this year, it's really helped them like, because high school, like in new school, all the teachers say they're not going to hold your hand, which is true. And I think Avid is kind of like a wake-up call, and if you do need that extra help, it is there for them. Yeah.
How do you believe you are preparing yourself for what comes after high school?
Organization.
That's been huge for you?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't, I have organized chaos. And so, Avid has like helped me change that to more of like a medium of organized chaos to actual organization.
You're organized neutral now?
Yes. So it's gonna like, it's, it's gonna help me in college when I have to like take organized notes, because I'm not really good at that, so it's gonna be all ready for that.
Riley, how about you? What about for what after comes?
Um, planning ahead, so you know, like, you're not running behind or being late. You're always prepared and just ready.
Awesome. How are you becoming the best citizen that you can be?
Um, well, this year, the picture on the board, the third one, the last one on the bottom, there's actually a few of our classmates pitching like community service ideas, which I guess kind of ties into the next question. But we are doing these around our community, like, for instance, we picked up trash. And later in the school year, we were planning on doing like a collaboration with the Humane Society, because they're looking for people to like adopt pets, like really badly. So it's just preparing you and like getting you like help with your community, because lots of jobs. One of our guest speakers, who we've had this year already, has mentioned that he's like the owner, I guess, of a company. And one of the things he looks for when he's hiring is having to be involved with your community.
That's awesome. Thank you. Alright, so, I know you guys were just thinking, all of us who've been Avid teachers, of course, this is my first year as an Avid, but we also had Ms. Tupe, who was with you for both years.
Yes.
And then, of course, Ms. Harvard also started with 7th grade last year. So you didn't get to have her as a teacher, but you know that she's been serving the program, which is awesome. And then, I know y'all are willing to take questions, so.
Anyone else?
For the girls that have been in there for the three years or whatever, do you feel like your, like, much progress has been better than maybe it would have been? Or, I feel like you guys made a lot of confidence in one, slowly to your first year, but, academically, how was it managed for you?
It's just overall, it's been helping me be more prepared, more organized, and then I can get like, just better manage my classes.
Um, for me, I, in 6th grade, when they came to us with Avid, I was kind of unsure about like what it was, but I think Avid has really helped me, because I was never a note taker. I absolutely despise taking notes, but now I realize that like they helped me and stuff. So yeah, I feel like I've been doing better in school.
What is the criteria for choosing students to be a part of this program?
Oh, that is such a good question. It's kind of complicated. Students actually apply to be part of the program. And so then we do wind up actually starting in the middle school to go through some of those things. Do you want to answer that question a little bit better? That might be easier.
I can go with that. So there's the application process, because part of Avid is the individual determination part. So students need to have that internal motivation to want to go to that next level. So there's several different criteria points. It's a little bit different from district to district. What we're looking for is kids that might be a first-generation college student. And again, that, that, that might be a little more prevalent in a highly urban setting or a highly rural setting versus where we are right now. But that's, that's one of the things. Often, they are students that are historically underrepresented in college. They might be more in the academic middle, or a kid that, as we're talking with teachers, I said, boy, this is, this is a good student, but with just that tad bit of support or skills, would be just college-bound. So those are the kind of students that we, that we target for Avid.
How many students do you choose every year?
I believe that we can have up to 25, is that what we?
Yep. The goal, the goal is an average class size, so it would be 25. And so, we, we're gonna have that cohort every single year. And so this group will, will grow up all the way up to seniors. So within a couple of years, we will have an Avid elective group in every grade level, from 7th grade through 12th grade. I, I will say, beyond just our Avid cohort of students, that, so 25 at each grade level, both the middle school and the high school, if you walked into any classroom right now, you would see evidence of Avid all over. You would see it on the walls, you would see it on the desks. It is part of their, their school improvement plans. So, we, we kind of look at it for two, for two different ways. We, we want Avid for this cohort of, of students to help them be college-ready, help them move on. But we also want it for all of our students to teach them these, these college readiness skills. And the students in the elective just are gonna get it in a, in a bigger dose.
I'm just gonna ask one more thing. Is it a highly competitive application process? Or do you, or is it more like teacher recommendation and then the student applies?
It's, sometimes the students are nudged a little bit on, on, on application. So we will reach out to the students about, hey, you know, we think you might be a good Avid student, and we'll present to a wide variety of students. And then from there, they have the choice whether they want to apply or not. So, yes, we end up turning kids away. And we maintain a, a list then, that if, if a student would decide, hey, it's down the line, they, they don't want to continue on with Avid, that, that we would have some students that we know that might be a good fit to, to come into the program.
Very good. Thank you.
So Ryan, just a quick question. Do, once the students are in from one grade level, do they automatically progress to the next grade level and stay in Avid?
Uh, they, they have the choice every year. And also, they have to maintain certain standards every year as well. So, a, a student might go on academic probation or on a contract if they're not meeting the grades, or if their behaviors are not of that, of an Avid student.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thanks so much.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Moving on to our, our next presentation, we'll invite Susan, Jen, and John Lyon to the podium for the presentation on Second Step.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk about Second Step. Jen, and John, and actually Tara Sorwinski will answer questions after a brief overview by me, and then we have a 10-minute video to share with you, okay? Second Step is our universal curriculum for social and emotional learning. Second Step has been in the district longer than 10 years. I don't know exactly when it started, but I know when I came to the district, we were using it. What we've done over those years is we, we've expanded it. The administrators, student services, as well as gen ed have worked together to create as the best predictable environment within the school by using same, the same type of language. Second Step addresses skills that fall into a number of categories, including self-awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making, and self-management. Units include things like problem-solving strategies, goal-setting, and recognizing bullying. Second Step is as much about staff, learning how to be consistent with their language, as it is about teaching students strategies to pick, for problem-solving, so they can pick the strategy that best fits the situation. We have a 10-minute video that was created by East learners, Northside learners, and the middle school learners. And when we finish our three administration, administrators are here to answer any questions that you might have. Resources for Second Step have been shared by either the administrators and their newsletter, grade levels, or individual teachers sharing with their parents, so that they know what's going on. Alright, thank you.
I'm speaking to you for being interventionist for both of these elementary schools. While I've been in the classroom prior to being an interventionist with the Milton School District, last year brought many changes to many roles of people who work for the district. In honor to last year, I discovered that I would be a new corporate teacher.
If I, my neighbor, we, this council, at one of these, it didn't take long for me to discover how important Second Step lessons would be in a pure classroom. I was fortunate enough to have Mrs. Murphy co-teach Second Step lessons with me. Second Step lessons get community interest to our students. What are feelings? What do they feel like? How do you deal with those feelings? Do they use a puppet? Roll play? Dancing? Singing? Children practice in a variety of ways that are incredibly engaging and developmentally appropriate. They practice with songs. We play lots of games in Second Step. There's stories. The most impressive part of the Second Step program was seeing the students implementing the strategies that they learned through Second Step. For instance, if they have difficulties, another student asking if they could go and talk to each other to work things out. How impressive was it to see that group being able to work out on their own? In my time spent in the classrooms going through the first of the Second Step, I now know we became very familiar with the four units. The first thing, teaching kids how to be alert, what does that mean? The second thing, how to recognize emotions and notice what others are feeling, the underpining of empathy. Whereas now we move into, what am I feeling, and how do I control my emotions when they start to get too vague? And it pretty much wraps up with problem-solving unit. It's not just the units that are all thought out, but the lessons within are so developmentally appropriate and things that sometimes we don't think the explicit teaching during the day. For example, in kindergarten, there's an entire lesson on waiting patiently. How often are our kindergartners expected to stop and wait patiently? It's important that they're taught in the classrooms, because that's where they get reinforced, and that's where they get practice.
There's a powerful thing in the program, such as Second Step. It provides common understanding, common expectations, and common terminology throughout our entire ability, which also makes our building an amazing place to sleep.
See, for me, partner, explicit instruction. See, for me, partner explicit instruction with a universal curriculum that's research-based. Then we take that shared learning and it was spreading across the building. We train everybody in the building around these common language and our common strategies. Then we cultivate an environment where students understand what the expectations are. And then they have strategy to be able to meet them. And guess what? We just find every student in our building to be ready to learn.
I'm watching, ears listening, or my eyes still.
Keep your eyes on the screen chair for the person you're talking. From top to your top. I'm watching, ears listening, and now who's here? So, right, skip.
Because, um, they're like, their, their bodies showing me what they are doing and what they are sad or mad about.
Look at their face. We don't need to tell by their face, their face and their body.
We've been a great act.
You can try to get a workout. You can have to start from the earth. You can try to get a workout. You can have to start from the earth. And it's a green chopper. I think it's a bad one. We need to calm down. For speaking, calm down. I would say like talk to them because they're going to be working out. That's why they're a team. And find the best way to go with them all of us.
I know that you need to push that for the team. Second Step, not only at primaries, but also in intermediate schools studying during my time in the district. And that could testify to the real power that this curriculum has in helping students develop a common language around academic skills for learning, managing their emotions, developing empathy and kindness, as well as problem solving. Um, seeing kids develop that role mindset, um, looking at setbacks and challenges and mistakes of lectures for learning and that growth from kindergartners through Northsiders has been really deep to see. Additionally, the common language that it gives us to be able to problem solve and navigate challenges with students is exceptionally helpful in solving their conflicts and problems. So one example that I highlight is the step process where students are taught to state their problem without blaming and conflict, to think of solutions. Um, they're both safe and respectful, to explore the consequences of those, as well as picking the best solution. Um, so really has had a positive impact, not only on primary students, but as well as.
Second Step of awareness strategy that students may not know they need until they need it. By discussing social and emotional learning strategies early on, I believe it can equip students with those resources that they can access whenever they need it. And this awareness can become natural so they have these strategies and are able to cope in a productive way whenever they need to.
At Milton Middle School, we are in our second year of using the Second Step curriculum to meet our student emotional learning needs or SEL needs. One of our 8th grade teachers shared some feedback from the experience using Second Step. Second Step allows for great conversations in the classroom. I use the lessons to help guide further discussion and personalize the lessons learned to reflect part of my home life experience. Second Step provides the framework for constructive SEL in the classroom. Without me as a guide, I would not really know what to be doing specifically with my teaching to students in the area of social emotional learning. Second Step also provides background creation on what each of these things are, as well as examples to guide them through strategic processes and personalized reflection that is geared toward the lives of students. It is the personal connection that kids really learn from. Find these concepts to the lives of they live rather than just hearing in other people's lives.
Thank you. Some things I've learned on myself is I was better to be kind or second to everyone than to hurt people for fun. And including people is a way where you pay to do and make them feel left out. Some skills I've used have been helping others when they need to help them. Some skills I've learned have been, I gave time to people those a long way. And if you never know what someone has going on, then you should never judge them. I think Second Step is important because people can find ways to help others when they need. It is also important because some kids might not know how to stop eating people or have not judged other people.
My ideas from Second Step are positive self-talk, taking breathing breath, and understanding that there's always a trusted adult there helping. Through these lessons I've learned, I've given old great things to them, borders, huga, and he's calmed down and refocused on the task I made. I feel that middle school is a difficult time for many kids. We are all experiencing changes and are confronted by situations that challenge us. Second Step gives us the chance to refocus on less useful skills that would please my everyday life.
Do you have questions for any of the principals?
Yeah, um, so I had a conversation with Mr. Rebels earlier today. Uh, and, uh, I just was wondering if I could get your take on how are the lessons chosen? Are they, are they set? Are they?
Yeah, so the way that the new digital materials work is there's the four big units that were highlighted in the video, and each one of those units has five digital lessons that go with it.
Okay.
So it's fairly prescribed and easy to use for teachers to guide those conversations with their students.
Okay. Um, so is there any room for teachers to add any lessons that they wish? Or like, are we set on those topics and just those lessons that are within that?
The universal curriculum are those, uh, lessons that John just spoke about.
Yep.
Um, but there are examples like in the video, you know, peer conflict. Let's say there's a bunch of problems happening outside in, uh, 2nd grade, just to pick a grade. Um, we might dive a little deeper into problem solving, conflict resolution, revisit some of those things.
Okay.
But just the focus would be about that language from the universal curriculum.
Okay.
Yep. Sure.
The only thing I'd add on to is the lessons are designed to be about 30 to 40 minutes continuously, but teachers are going to seize upon that teachable moment throughout the week.
Sure.
Kramer was describing, there's a problem at recess, maybe we can revisit this as a class.
Sure.
Right? So those kind of natural opportunities present themselves.
Sure. Um, and I guess my last question, do, do we use? So according to the website, there are resources that, um, that could be used to teach about things like racial justice, white privilege, anti-racism. Is that what we use Second Steps for? Or is it primarily just for behavior issues, you know, to mitigate those within the classroom? How would you answer it or you can?
Yeah, I'll give you a first off. I think really it's about teaching life skills and it's been called a lot of different things over the years. Right? But SEL, social emotional learning and life skills are really one of the same. Um, so teaching empathy and perspective-taking is certainly part of the scope and sequence of Second Step. Your question specifically, I have not seen at Northside intermediate school.
Same. Cool. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
I was wondering if you could, um, just talked about how Second Step meshes with what guidance counselors do at the, at the lower levels. Um, does it, does it coincide with that? Does it mesh with that? And then just also, Second Step is taught by classroom teachers, correct?
Yep, and I am going to let John take this because she'll give a lot more detail. But when I, when I first started in the district, our guidance, we call them school counselors now, spent a lot more time in the classroom doing the teaching. But what the students were starting to do is saying, oh, when the counselor's here, I have to behave a certain way. When the teacher's here, I behave a different way. It's something much like probably kids at home versus school. When mom and dad are there, I behave a certain way. And when I'm at school, I try on a few different behaviors. Um, so we, we moved to have Second Step implemented by Gen Ed teachers, which was what it was designed for. Because if the teacher teaches how to be a good friend and then during math class, somebody isn't being a good friend, the teacher can intervene right away and talk about what did we learn about being a good friend? Um, instead of having to call the counselor down to try to have the conversation about a good friend. That then allows the counselors to do, to assist teachers with some of the coaching when they're, when they're doing some problem solving. But they also get an opportunity to do, to do some tier two. So you have four kids in a classroom that are really struggling with grasping the concepts. That counselor can now spend some time in reteaching in a small group and reinforcing those skills. But I bet Jen has something to add.
What she said. No, the only other thing that I would add to that is the benefit of having that school counselor. They have a, a deep understanding of that Second Step universal curriculum so that when they do that tier two type example that Susan had given, they are familiar with that vocabulary and what the students have learned from the universal to then reemphasize that, um, you know, tier two.
Thank, thank you.
They're a good check for each other because we know the development, developmental milestones of a four-year-old or a five-year-old change throughout that year. And so those teachers can check each other, the counselor and the teacher can check each other to make sure we're not expecting too much from somebody at a certain age and that we push them hard enough because we want them to be capable.
So I, as a teacher, in my last year of teaching, had, we had just started implementing Second Step in 7th grade and 8th grade and 6th grade at our school. Uh, and our guidance counselor can't get to all the kids in the middle school. So it was easier for us to, we did it once a week, 30 minutes. And I noticed that in the five lessons of each unit, there was a lot of repetition. So there was a few reminders of what was going on. It was stress, relationships, but at the 7th grade level. So again, we used examples of what was going on within the classroom or maybe within the school, um, different things like that. And then when they went to the guidance counselor with issues, they followed through with the rest of it because they just couldn't come into our classrooms anymore. And, um, there was a lot of road clearing scenarios and it got the kids to really talk in my room. Um, sometimes too much, you know, because everybody wanted to talk and participate in it. And it got kids who normally wouldn't speak up, maybe to share with a partner or share with a group and then come back as a whole group. And it went really fast in those 30 minutes. So sometimes we could have used more time, but we only had it once a week. But it seemed to be working, just like opening up the dialogue with kids.
Thanks, Shelley. Any other questions for the team? Thanks very much. Great video. Thank you for your time tonight. Moving on to item number three on the agenda, Human Resources Committee, um, report. I will turn it over to Mr. Mellon.
Okay, thanks, Mike. The HR committee met last week on Wednesday, the 6th. First item on the agenda was the Benefits Advisory Group Meeting Review. And I am going to ask Chris to give me a hand with this one.
So the first item that the Benefits Advisory Group had talked about was the decision to start a wellness group for the 21-22 year. And we are planning to meet, uh, four times throughout the year. The team is made up of 13 staff members, dean representatives, and HR.
Sorry. All right, let me go back. So we started off a wellness group, uh, for the 21-22 year and we're planning to meet four times this year. Um, we, the group is made up of 13 staff members, dean representatives, and the HR team. We are planning to hold four meetings, uh, the, in October, November, March, and April. The next item that we talked about was WA Trust Life Insurance. Uh, the Human Resources Committee reviews the district insurance on a yearly basis. Throughout the, through this review, we look at our current benefits compared with other school districts that are similar in size and geographically located near Milton. This review is done with Al Jaeger and the USI team as our third-party administrators. For the 21-22 year, we'll be reviewing the district's life insurance benefit. Uh, WA Trust is the insurance policy holder and they have issued a two-year rate freeze for the school district of Milton's life insurance plans. And this freeze will end in June of 2022. The district will review other school district life insurance plans and also consider other companies' life insurance bids. The next item that we talked about was the school district of Milton's other post-employment benefits. And in this conversation, uh, the item was focused, or this conversation was focused on the education of the Benefits Advisory Group members and their, uh, retiree health insurance. And at a future, uh, Benefits Advisory Group meeting, we will talk more about, uh, district comparables, reviewing the cost, uh, as well as the district's unfunded liability. The next item that we talked about was a staff wage discussion. The number of payments that school year staff are paid on a yearly basis. Uh, school district of Milton, uh, staff that are school year employees have two choices on the number of payroll checks that they receive. We are considering stepping back from the two-year choices to improve efficiencies and be consistent amongst our school year staff. The business office and the HR department are aware of the impact on financial planning for our school year employees. And additional conversations will be had at future Benefits Advisory Group meetings. Um, the last item of our Benefits Advisory Group was our school wellness clinic. The school wellness clinic has been operating since July of '21 and serves seven other school districts, um, and their families. That's for our benefit eligible employees and their families. The school districts include Cambridge, Edgerton, Evansville, Stoughton, Whitewater, Fort Atkinson, and Milton. As of mid-September, 70 individuals throughout the seven school districts have utilized the clinic. And as of October 4th, the school district wellness clinic began administering the Pfizer COVID-19 booster shot to staff. We don't have any kind of numbers yet, but we're hoping a future meeting with, uh, the dean representatives of that clinic will have more of a idea of how many people are utilizing the clinic for those booster shots, the Pfizer booster shots. And that's the Benefits Advisory Group.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Anyone have any questions or comments about any of that? Thank you, Chris. Um, next item on the agenda was the 20-21-22 Nutrition Team Staffing. In the past few months, there have been 10 new staff hired for the nutrition team. However, that does leave us with five current vacancies still. HR team is still looking out, um, still trying to hire people to fill those vacancies. That hasn't been going super great, but they have reached out to a couple staffing agencies to help the HR team fill things such as, uh, leaves of, uh, for medical purposes or long-term, long-term absences. Um, the HR team is, uh, currently working with these agencies to, um, get tours scheduled of the, of the facilities and we are optimistic that these will help fill these vacancies and, uh, we will keep the board updated as to how this is going. Any questions or comments about that? Or Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
I do have anything to add.
All right. Chris, have we been able to deliver lunch assimilating so many additional employees in five openings and lunch going on as planned? Or is it starting to present some issues in just the delivery?
Um, we've had, uh, with being short-staffed, um, we've had a number of, uh, members of the district office team, uh, HR, uh, the business office, payroll, uh, have helped serve food. Um, and, uh, I've tied it with a few meetings that I've had at the high school and pitched in to help do some dishes in between meetings. So we've, uh, when Mr. Gazdeck is short, we try to help out where we can from the district office level. In addition, the high school administration has stepped in, uh, to help serve as well. So we are feeling confident that once we have fully staffed, um, those needs will not, we won't need to have. those needs will not, we won't need to have our administration in the high school or from the district office head over there.
Sincere thanks to you and the other administrative staff that have helped out to make lunch happen successfully. Thank you.
No worries.
Any other questions? Thanks so much, Chris. Thanks, Rick. Moving on to item number four. First item is new businesses, discussion and possible action on the 202122 Milton High School Extended Field Trip Requests. Mr. Billhorn.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. The first item I have there are the extended travel. So in your packets, you have the list of the trips that are planned for this school year. And each of those, they are with a different student organization. Each of them have the appropriate number of chaperones planned, or in some cases, they've been working on some fundraising for some time. If some of the larger trips that are the summer trips, they start working ahead of time on fundraising activities. We bring them in the fall of the year that they go. Some of the overseas trips, we've actually backed up a little bit because of COVID. And to that point, too, with all of our extended travel, while board policy does require that you approve us to take these trips this year, we've added another layer this year. Each of these trips, the advisors meet with Rich and I. We review where we are at with COVID safety procedures. And for example, the history COVID trip that's going to be going to Philadelphia, we review the COVID, the, the prevalence of numbers that are in that area, the vaccination rates in that area. And we have a determination, Rich and I, determine if it's going to go. So while we're approving these tonight, this year, we are also having another layer that we have a set date where we review all those numbers as well. Work with Brittany, who's our district nurse, to review if we can take that trip. We have those dates set so that if we do have to cancel that trip, we can do so at a time where there's a full refund for the students as well.
What are the requirements for students to be able to go on these trips, given the current situation with COVID?
So with regards to, what are the, where the COVID, where the safety mitigations? Are the, being able to participate in a trip?
Yeah, I mean, are they required to have their vaccine or are they?
So, no, we do not require vaccination. We follow the same rules that we have at school, and that's kind of our mantra. We do require masking, except when they are eating. We, it's an overnight trip on the bus, we do allow them obviously to take the mask off while they're sleeping. One item that we have actually added is that before they get onto a bus, we're actually going to be taking temperatures before they get onto the bus as well. But that's the one added procedure that we put it, to put into place this last week. But otherwise, it's following the same safety procedures that we have for the regular school day. Because the, the trips are an extension of the classroom, an extension of the activity. So we follow generally the same, the same procedures. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the 202122 Milton High School Extended Field Trip Request as presented.
A second.
There's a motion on the floor made by Rick, seconded by Leslie, to approve the 202122 Milton High School Extended Field Trip Requests as presented. Any more discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, respond with aye. Aye, and opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, discussion and possible action on early graduation requests.
All right. So per board policy, students have the opportunity, our seniors have an opportunity to apply for early graduation. They're able to do so at the end of the second trimester. The students in your packet, the 21 students that are in your packet, have all met those requirements. They've met with their school counselors and have applied. Provided all things go well, first and second trimester, they'll be able to graduate in the first week of March. They have the opportunity to get their transcript that indicates that they have graduated at that point. They also have, we welcome them to participate in the graduation ceremonies in June as they walk across the stage. The one other item, first move on to our board members as well, is that while some students choose to apply to graduate early, there's, and it does happen every year. Some students will say, you know, I, partway through second trimester, I really do want to go out for that spring sport. I really do want to finish with my class. Can I get a schedule? We always allow them to do that. Sometimes they do wish to finish the year out, in which case we get them a schedule. They're able to do that, even if their early graduation was approved. Any questions?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Hearing none. All in favor, respond with aye. And opposed, nay. Motion carries. And Mr. Billhorn, lastly, early college credit program, Start College Now.
All right. Thank you very much. And this is for information for the board this evening. But twice a year, I bring to you the Start College Now and the Early College Credit Applications. Those students are wishing to exercise those state programs. Start College Now is an opportunity for students who have exhausted our curriculum to take courses at a local technical college, Blackhawk being our region, or through the Start College Now, or, excuse me, the Early College Credit Program through the UW system or University of Wisconsin Whitewater at Rock County as well. Is that other location where they can use that? Both cases, students will have to have exhausted our current curriculum. They have to apply by a set date. They also have to maintain a certain grade point. They have to pass the classes. But we do pay up, up to 18 college credits per student who qualify for those programs. And that's done on their semester system. So we do work that into our schedule because we're on the trimesters. But these are the students who have applied for the second half of the year for both of those programs. I've indicated they're both with a number of college credits that they would be earning and also the high school credit that they earn as well.
Would you say this is a typical number?
It is. It's a little bit less. We actually, with the Wired program and Edmentum, we actually have a few more options of courses that sometimes students would not have been able to, we would not have been able to have that course. And sometimes students took that at Blackhawk Tech. We actually have like sociology and some economics courses. We have those available now online and that are available for students.
All right. Any questions for Jeremy? Thanks so much, Mr. Billhorn.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number D, Third Friday in September Student Count. Mr. Damon, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. There are a couple of things that I want to share regarding the Third Friday count. We did get the official numbers from DPI over the last week. And Kim, I think we'll start, we have a few different documents in Board Docs. Let's start with the 917 2021 number in buildings document, the rainbow. And there's a couple of different things that, that the documents that we're going to look at track. One is the actual number of students who are in our, our schools and in our, in our classrooms. And the other is the, the, the count for DPI purposes. This one, this chart shows our total count in each building. You can see listed down the left-hand column are the different schools. Down the right, or across the top are the different grade levels. And then on the far right column, the totals in each building. And then in that bottom right-hand corner, that grade total across all of our schools. And this is from, this includes preschool, special ed, 4K, and then all of our grade levels from kindergarten through 12th grade. And you can see that total is 3,425 students. I'll, I'll look at another document that shows a comparison to previous years. But that's one of the things that we look at. Those are broken out at each grade level and at each school by the number of resident students. Those are students that live within our school district. Non-resident open enrollment students, those are students that live outside of our district but choose to attend our school district. And then Jedi residents are residents of our school district that are, are doing our online programming through our Jedi program. So again, there you can see each of the different schools, at each grade level, the number of students that we have. And I'll, I'll circle back to any questions after we've looked at all of the different pieces of data. Then if you want to do next, Kim, the resident DPI count chart. This is, excuse me. This is a little bit different. This shows all of the schools across the top, the different grade levels down the side. And this is what is actually our Third Friday count. And this is the number that's used by DPI to determine funding for future years. You can see if you look all the way again down in that bottom right-hand corner, the total DPI count is 3,467. Again, that's for preschool through 12th grade. And the September '21 total in the building is at 3,425. Number again in that bottom right-hand corner. In the boxes down below on the right, you can see some descriptions of, of those numbers. And for comparison's sake, in the bottom left-hand corner, you can see the 2122 number reported to DPI of this year, that 3,467. Last year, that number was 3,553. So that's a decrease of 86 students in that count from last year to this year. And then you can see that broken down by each of the buildings. In the bottom right-hand corner, that's the number in each of our schools. Again, that comparison between September of last year and September of, of this year. There's also a document included there that, that we won't reference, but it is last year's chart that shows the DPI count. People can reference that for comparison's sake. But the other item that I do want to walk through is the September totals. Yep, Kim has it up on the screen now. And what that does is takes a look at each of our grade levels from last year's September count to this year's September count and notes the difference. So to make sure that, that's being interpreted correctly. This is, this just lists kindergarten through 12th grade. So it doesn't include 4K or, or special ed preschool. But it has listed in that first left-hand column, last year's number of students at each grade level and that total of 3,337 students in kindergarten through 12th grade. In the next column, it's the, this current year's as of September of 2021, number of students at each grade level from kindergarten through 12th grade, that total of 3,280. And then in the far right column, it shows a cohort plus or minus. So what that's comparing is what happened at each grade level from last September to this September. So for example, last year's kindergarten had a, had a total of 226 students. Those same students this year in first grade, there are 224 of them. So there's two fewer first graders than we had in kindergarten a year ago. It's a way to look at gains and losses from year to year, looking at the same group of, of students. We know that as you look at that entire list, there's some ebbs and flows from one grade level to the next. So comparing this year's fourth graders to last year's fourth graders isn't always the best way to compare because each grade has a different number of students. But comparing this year's fourth graders to last year's third graders, the same group of kids, gives us that look at what those changes are from year to year. In that far right-hand column, you'll see some of those grade levels go down. Some of them go up, kind of in the middle grades there, you see some increases of eight, eight, and 16 students from last year to this year. And other places, it's gone down. Third grade into fourth grade is a decrease of nine students. Another place where it decreased was last year's ninth grade into 10th grade. But overall, if you look at that right-hand column, you'll see an overall increase of 23 students in that kindergarten through 12th grade. From last year's kindergarten through 11th grade, becoming this year's first grade through 12th grade. A logical question then is if, if those cohorts overall went up, why is our overall attendance down? And you can also see the answer to that on this chart. If you look at last year's senior class, we have 301 students. So a large group, that at the time was our largest group of students that graduated out of our system. And if you circle to the top of the next column at the incoming kindergarteners, it's 219 incoming kindergarteners. So just taking the graduating senior class compared to, from last year, compared to this year's incoming kindergarten class, there's 82 fewer students. And that's a bit of a trend. If you look just in general at this year's numbers, you can see the highest numbers. Actually, the four largest classes are our ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade currently. Over the upcoming years, those larger classes are going to be graduating, graduating out of our schools. And the trend is that they're replaced by smaller groups coming in. Now, we do take a look at and try to anticipate how many students are going to be in that incoming kindergarten class and those incoming 4K classes. We never know for sure how large those groups are going to be, but we can get a pretty good idea. But in general, we can anticipate that unless we have new families moving into the district or additional students choosing to attend our district, we can anticipate that our enrollment is likely to continue to decline based on those large groups at the high school graduating out and typically smaller groups coming in to replace them. We know from our work with our budget that that, the, the fewer students that we have long-term, that means fewer revenues coming in from the state. So we have to look at ways, as we're planning for the upcoming years, look at ways that we can mitigate that decrease in revenue. We do know that when there's fewer students, there's fewer expenses too. Some of our programs are based on a cost per student. Obviously, in our classrooms, if we have fewer students, there isn't as need for as many staff. So those are things that we want to continue to keep an eye on. So any questions, comments, thoughts on, on the enrollment and Third Friday count?
Rich, at what point do kids who attend parochial or private schools and that kind of K through 8 range, at what point do they, I guess, signal their intent if though, if their kids will be coming to the high school? To, is there generally an uptick in the freshman class? To see if I'm reading this right, there was one this year a little bit. Is there any kind of projection with the, the change or bounce or whatever that is anticipated in the future?
Typically do pick up some students at, at a couple of different grade levels. You mentioned ninth grade is one where we'll, we'll oftentimes add students to the, to the cohort in particular because of some students that go to, may choose a private school up through eighth grade and then, and then public school for high school. I think in the past, sixth grade, seventh grade, and that range has been a time when some students who have had other, have chosen other options up, up until that time will transfer into our school district. So we look at, we look at the history of that and try to anticipate what that will be from year to year.
Any other questions for Rich? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Damon. We will move on to item number E, Action on 202122 Open Enrollment Alternative Applications, which are in Board Docs.
I move to approve the 202122 Open Enrollment Alternative Applications as presented.
I'll second that.
There's a motion on the floor made by Leslie, seconded by Rick, to approve the 202122 Open Enrollment Alternative Applications as presented. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, respond with aye. Aye, and opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving down to miscellaneous. Item A, Action on Staffing Reports.
I move to approve the staffing report as presented.
There's a motion on the floor made by Leslie, seconded by Rick, to approve the staffing report as presented. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, respond with aye. Aye, and opposed, nay. Motion carries. Upcoming board and committee meetings, Mr. Damon. I know we have a curriculum meeting on Wednesday, the 13th at nine o'clock, correct?
Nine AM for the Curriculum Committee, Committee on, on Wednesday, the 13th. That'll be in the second floor conference room. We had talked about but hadn't finalized a finance committee meeting. We had talked about October 21st at noon for that meeting. I know that Joe wasn't here tonight, but for the other members of the finance committee, maybe we can circle back and see if that date and time does indeed work for everyone. The next regularly scheduled board meeting is on October 25th, two weeks from tonight, here at 6:30 PM. And then we'd like to schedule an HR committee meeting for the week of October 18th. And I see Chris walking up his. And I see Chris walking up, he's, can maybe share some information about that upcoming HR committee meeting. So finance committee members, did, did the twenty-first at noon, was that going to work?
No. Do we have to have it that week? Is that the goal? If we could have it earlier in the week, that would be best.
So this is in preparation for the levy.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, what happens is I don't get all the information until October fifteenth and I have to turn around and prepare it for the board meeting. So that's why we're looking at that Thursday or Friday.
In, in preparation for the board meeting on the twentieth, right?
Correct, yes.
Could we move it to the Wednesday? Is that too much pressure on you?
We can move it and then let's hope we can finish. I don't feel like, well, I have them set.
Well, I don't want to rush you, so it's certainly.
That's okay.
We can kind of, on me.
I do want everybody to be there, so. I should, it would probably be okay if I have some more important things to do after the committee meeting. You overdo, John?
Okay.
And I have a conversation for you now.
I appreciate that.
Does noon on that, noon on Wednesday, the twentieth work for you, Leslie?
Yeah.
Day for you?
Could it be later? I have another board meeting that would probably overlap.
What time?
After the run, you'd be okay?
Would it one o'clock, right at one o'clock, would that work? Is that what you guys? Kim, do you want to reach out to Joe? Let's pencil that in and we'll.
I'm tired of that hour.
We have, I, I have a meeting at two that, two, so. So if, if we're not done by, by two, I'll need to leave. But pencil that in and Kim will circle back with Joe and then reach out to the finance committee members.
So just to, just to clarify, that's Wednesday, October twentieth at one o'clock for finance?
Yes.
Okay.
And how about HR committee members, the week of the eighteenth?
Could you do the twenty-second at seven-thirty?
Does that work for the rest of the committee?
Well, I don't think, I'm not sure about, I'll check with Joe, but. But, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I wasn't.
Okay, all right.
So we can check on that date and time, Friday, the twenty-second at seven-thirty?
Well, Chris, if you have that.
Me, I'll make sure to work on that now.
Okay, well, okay.
The tricky thing with that Friday is that our board meeting is that following Monday, so we would need to have a really quick turnaround on any agenda items and make sure I get them into board docs. I think we could do it depending on what the, what the agenda items are going to be, but if there's something that needs to be prepared for, for that following Mondays board meeting, it doesn't give us much time to make sure we get that in board docs by the end of the day of Friday.
Okay, let me reach out to Joe and I'll touch bases.
Sounds good.
That covers it? Thank you. Last on the list is the adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
All in favor respond with aye. Aye and opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.